Sir, five o'clock. And then I know we've got a few folks here to sign up on public comment, so we'll just all read through the list as you guys have ordered your names there and stuff. And so I think Michael Glover, I think, you know, I did sign in, I wrote your name on here, but I didn't know if you want to, okay, no.
You can observe there.
Observe, okay, observe and report, sorry. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and read through our, kind of our state of language here on guest and public comment. And then I'll start with Ms. Tiffany Kinslow, and then followed up by Ms. Mercy Bales, and then Ms. Rose Hurdle. So, the public comment agenda item provides an opportunity for constituents to address the Duffer School District of Education, Board of Education, the Chair will call on individuals who have signed up, provide comments when your name is called, please be seated and use the seat right here at the end by Mr. Fane, and be seated there. Speakers may often have objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel, hard copies or the copies of the policies for this are all in line. You guys can take a look at the dooford.k12.org. U.S. undue interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of board business cannot be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, they will be asked to leave. Each presenter will have a maximum of three minutes to speak, and all comments should be directed to the board chair. And so I think, I think most of you have done comments to the board previously and stuff. And so if you want, Ms. Tiffany, if you want to come on up and all right, well, go on up. We'd love to hear what you may have.
And I think that Mercy provided a packet around the staff's interest proposal, like the board could consider a four-day work week, so this is in there as well. So I'll try to read through it very carefully. So I'm here to express my support for the implementation of a four-day work week. Week in the Duffer School District, as the Director of Mental Health, I have had the opportunity to observe and work closely with both students and staff. And I believe this transition has the potential to positively impact the mental and emotional well-being of our entire school community. I've been a licensed mental health professional since 2006, and since that time have worked primarily with kids, adolescents, and families. During that time, I worked within school systems, even when I wasn't employed by a district. And then in 2013, I started working at the Dallas District 21, and then here in 2019. So in that time, I witnessed a dramatic increase in the mental health needs and behavioral challenges of school-aged children. Simultaneously, the expectations placed on educators and school staff have continued to grow. Teachers are now expected to serve not only as educators, but often as social workers, emotional supports, and in many cases, surrogate parental figures. This increase in responsibility, often without a corresponding increase in time or resources, has placed a significant strain on staff. A four-day work week could offer much-needed relief and opportunity in several ways. First, it could provide essential time for planning and collaboration. As a mental health professional, one of my greatest challenges is finding time to work meaningfully with teachers and administrators to develop targeted support plans for kids. When schedules are packed and staff are stretched thin, these conversations are often rushed or delayed, sometimes leaving students' needs unmet, and sometimes just kind of drive-bys in the hallway, on your way to the office, on your way to your car, in all sorts of places. So a dedicated day for professional development and collaboration could allow us to be more proactive, rather than reactive, working together to address student concerns before they escalate into crises. Additionally, the extra day could serve as a vital tool for staff recovery and well-being. We cannot support our students effectively if we do not support the adults who care for them. A more balanced schedule could help reduce burnout, improve morale, and promote a healthier work life. That ones for our staff, ultimately resulting in stronger, more compassionate learning environments. For students, a four-day week can provide a consistent and predictable structure that prioritizes quality over quantity. With more intentional planning time, we can enhance the effectiveness of instruction and intervention, especially for students struggling emotionally or behaviorally. Moreover, an extra day can be leveraged for enrichment opportunities, counseling sessions, or family engagement work, helping us reach students in more personalized and impactful ways. And I would say, working in Duffer, Duffer does a great job of this already, wrapping around kids that need that extra support. But there are, there's only so many hours in the day, and so many things come up that sometimes that planning gets pushed to the side. I strongly believe that moving to a four-days-a-week will allow us to better meet the increasingly complex needs of our students and our staff. More time for collaboration is not a luxury, it's a necessity. We are to create a school culture that is supportive, responsive, and sustainable. Thank you. Time.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Mercy Bales, and then Ms. Rose Hurdle.
Hey, um, my, I'm starting off with my son works, he teaches first grade at Union, and that's a four-day school week. And so it's been interesting learning from him and asking him all sorts of questions this year, and it made it feel like it was definitely doable and something that would, I think would be a real positive step for us in a lot of ways. So I'm ready to express my support for the implementation of a four-day school week. As someone who genuinely loves my job and the students I teach, I can confidently say that this change could have a profound positive effect, not just on the teachers, but on students and families. When I began teaching 25 years ago, I'm really old, that's a long time ago. My primary role was to teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. My job description was much shorter and much more focused. Today, my priority lies in building relationships with my students, so that they feel safe and loved, as well as meeting each diverse student's primary needs, so they can even begin to learn. I am expected to reach each individual's current level, which often ranges from kids knowing two letters of the alphabet to kids reading fourth and fifth grade, and everything in between. And so while academic instruction is still important and essential, it's become only one piece of a much larger and complicated puzzle. We're now challenged with teaching not only academics, but so many other things. Self-regulation, manners, hygiene, language, emotional expression, and kindness, and even potty training. The last three to five years, that has increased. Kids are not even coming to school potty trained. And behavioral support, basic care. We do all of this while striving to keep things fun, which is important to me, to keep school a place where students want to come to. And all the while, we're implementing increasingly complex standards, which have been moved down. I am now teaching second-grade stuff that Holly is now teaching the stuff that I was teaching in the beginning. Our job descriptions have now transitioned to chapter books. There are many wonderful things about being a K-12 school, but one significant challenge is that we are required to hold our three, four, five-year-olds through fifth grade to the same number of seat hours as our high school students, for transportation purposes and other things. In fact, our elementary students attend our school 90 to 100 hours more per year than average elementary students in other schools. This is particularly frustrating when our schedule is based on high school hour requirements, yet high school attendance on Fridays is often incredibly poor, many with only a few students present. Last Friday was an example of this, and we're trying to get the attendance to give to you guys to show that that would be something we could get in the future to show you the actual numbers for Fridays. Four-day school week wouldn't just be a welcome relief, it would be positive strategic change. It's not about creating a new Friday or lessening accountability. I believe the opposite would happen. Morale, motivation, and perseverance would increase for both students and staff, knowing that there's a built-in day for rest, catch-up, reset, and planning. What would Fridays look like for staff? And that's a conversation that I'd love to be a part of and that many of us would need to be a part of. Personally, I would be grateful for some quiet uninterrupted time in my classroom to be able to plan and prepare more hands-on and integrated activities for the coming week. My current daily prep kind is awesome, I love it, but it's usually spent addressing behaviors, disciplining, talking to parents, communicating, and trying to stay afloat from the current day. My desk is just, actually just trying to organize and get through all the stuff on my desk. Perhaps if we did have Fridays, our instructional aides could offer like enrichment activities, our amazing sports camps that have been happening for the younger kids could fall on those days. And is it possible to have our high school and junior high sports teams travel to away games on the Fridays, which would also offer our transportation staff additional opportunities? Could we offer up teacher access days, like the Union School District here and there, to offer extra help to the struggling students? There's a lot of different possibilities. And I realized that a community survey was conducted a few years ago, and the idea of a four-day week wasn't well-received. But respectfully, we are not asking to make this decision based on opinions and assumptions of community members, and some who don't even have children attending school here. We, the educators, those of us that are in the trenches every day, are asking you to honor feedback and the proposal of the internal stakeholders who see and feel the reality of our classrooms and the effects of today's educational demands, the effects that they are having on our kids. And if there's any doubt about what students and teachers are truly facing, I encourage anyone to come visit a classroom. See for yourselves. Kids today are struggling, attention spans are shrinking, anxiety is growing, self-regulation is often minimal. Behaviors are increasing, and so is the weight on teachers' shoulders. We're not complaining, and we're, we're just asking for support, sustainability, and a system that sets everyone up to thrive. There's a reason so many small schools have adopted a four-day school week and have continued to implement it. It's not about doing less, I feel like it's about doing better. Thanks for your time.
Thanks, thank you, before you, before you leave, can I ask one quick thing?
Yeah.
So what you're suggesting here is students on a regular class schedule go four days, but the staff would work the Friday as, potentially as a prep and to get all these things done that you guys need to do, is that what you're?
We, and that's the thing, like, we, we didn't come up with a plan for Fridays yet because we don't, that I feel like comes if this is accepted, then we can, or in the process of it. We've talked about staff development, we, I feel like there's some, there's a lot of different ideas with that. And, and I don't want to speak for, I don't, we have real creative and intelligent people that can, and as well as, I know there's a certain amount of hours that teachers need for professional development. I think that would look, you know, we would use those days for that, too.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify what you were, what you were proposing, so.
Well, yeah, there's all, I was just throwing out some ideas, too. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Ms. Rose Hurdle.
Teaching today comes with many new challenges that did not exist before. As a teacher of mostly middle-school students, it's very apparent that students struggle with focus and engagement, very much influenced by the constant exposure to digital content. This makes it harder to maintain students' attention with meaningful instruction, manage the classroom, and meet learning goals. Today's students lack focus and motivation, mostly due to lack of sleep and distractions from divisive. With these shifts in student behavior, how can we realistically adjust our approach to ensure both teachers and students are set up for success? Teachers are challenged to keep up with the ever-changing, fast-paced digital nonsense that children have become addicted to. Some of it's not nonsense, but a lot of the things they are addicted to is. Students, as well as adults, would benefit from a four-day school week, not just to recharge mentally and catch up on rest from chaotic weekdays, but also for teachers to plan engaging activities that would keep the attention of today's student.
That's a way to keep. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to have a public comment? That's, that's who I have on my list.
Robert, can I just add, originally, we had like a large group of teachers that wanted to come for the meeting last Monday. And then when it got changed, we have so many baseball games and dance and jobs that were already taken and different things, that it's minimal, so that's why there's a lot of blurbs and letters from other staff members.
Yeah, I see your list there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for mentioning that, that's, that's kind of what I assume, and tonight's hot, we'll leave night, so I assume that there's a lot of parents and students and teachers there, so. I mean, I just, I just, for the staff specifically, you know, thank you guys for coming in and sharing some of your thoughts on this and everything. And so as we get one through the board meeting, one of the things that's on our agenda here is the school calendar and then some talk on a retreat, we're trying to get planned for next week on kind of final topics and stuff, so. There'll be a few points in there, I think this, that four-day week item may come up, but I'm just gonna say, well, we wouldn't expect any decisions specifically on the four-day week tonight. I, I do appreciate your, the guys and your thoughts and concerns around that, so you guys know it best as far as being at the front lines with these students and trying to navigate the day-to-day classroom activity. I, they don't let me in the classroom, so anyways, thank you very much, I'll be out of the board. Okay, with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and move into the consent agenda. And so if everybody had a chance to take a look and read through the board minutes for the March third, 2025 board meeting, if there's any corrections or questions or comments on that. I'm going to say we'd be more.
The minor like the sounds of names.
You want to really just, just make note of those, I mean.
Samantha Brock is spelled S E. And then employees of love recognition, and then my name was spelled incorrectly somewhere, but it's anniversary, and it's, it's, I don't think it's a big deal, I just.
Yeah, you have it marked up.
No, not this one, because I read it on the computer.
Well, if you want to, if you want to submit that back, I'm sure you get those corrections.
It's not, okay, changes the, or anything.
Okay, and, and you guys have, okay. When is there any other items in there? Okay, I be willing to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Big motion to approve the consent, and then second that. Thanks, Tim is the making motion, Stan is going to second the motion. Does any further discussion on consent agenda? Hearing on all's in favor of approving the consent agenda, signified by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we'll move into the financial reports, and Mr. Josie Turner, and then on the table in front of you, they had some flyers, and you have a presentation that's different.
That it's in text.
Okay. It's a bit turned over.
Somewhere. Um. This should look familiar by now. Um, no huge surprises, we are trending low in local tax revenue this year. My calculations, estimations for the rest of the year put me at about $80,000 low, which we will get corrected for next year, but just, that's why that's in the local source revenue that's going to be low for this year. Um, other than that, no big surprises, nothing out of the ordinary. Um. You're gonna see, do I have 82.6% currently for the year on salaries and associated costs? So obviously, we keep talking about that, the largest portion of budget. And I just am consumed right now by budget development is my big current task and push. It's what I do for a large portion of the day every day, is look at it for the bit, but I don't have a whole lot of new to report.
The, any of you on the board have any specific questions about finance, either with the information in front of you or anything you'd like to ask of Ms. Josie tonight? That's, nothing, I think, that's all we need tonight, so we're letting it all go easy. We do know, we do know and understand that the budget processing is pulling rabbit out of the hat with what the numbers are going to be and stuff, and that waiting for the state essentially to see what those numbers are going to actually be, know what our actual budget is, so. Anyways, yeah, thank you for the information here, and we'll move, I see Mrs. Whitley is not here tonight, so I'm just going to move straight into Mr. Jack Henderson Superintendent AD report.
All right, thank you, sir. First thing, Jared, we had a Jared Walker Florida trustees meeting here in the recent past. And it, and it was kind of an interesting meeting, and Stan, you can chime in here, too. But it was the first time that we ever heard our investment advisor from Jensen advising us to develop a cash account, get money, get money into a cash account, so that we wouldn't have to sell our stuff moving forward to get money, just because of the uncertainty with the stock market and things like that. So that was the first time we had ever heard that. And then we did some cleaning up of, excuse me, cleaning up of buylaws and things like that during the meetings. Really, what did Stan, what did you?
Well, I, I never really thought about it, but, and it's since that meeting, the, the stock market is, you know, not, not been good to us.
Yeah.
And we've accumulated so many scholarships and so much money during that, that we we're putting out there multi-year contracts for this money, because there's more than I can do in one year, so. And I think this is a great, a great thing to do, that we pull that money out of the market, put it into a CD or saving account, so we have, it's, it's a, it's an unguaranteed liability to the organization, and so if we pull it out, we put it in a CD, maybe 3% or 5%. And then we're able to use that over a spread over four years or whatever our liability is for those scholarships of that year. So it's good protection for those scholarships to, if the market really crashes, and, and if they get really crazy, we could end up have liability to these students that they've earned through scholarships, and, and, I mean, we'd have the money there, but I think this is a good way to protect that. So that was really a smart move on the, on the organization, I think, to do that, that was, that was a pretty big deal. But other than that, you know, we talked about I'm on top seat this year and filling my position again, or all these changes that's going on, Mr. Henderson retiring, all these things, so just a lot of cleanup stuff to do and to think about, because we definitely live in changing times, so. Anyway, the fund is, is very healthy, and Jensen management are just the best group of people for financial direction. We feel very blessed to be tied to them, so anyway, it's, everything's rolling good, and everybody's optimistic about the future, so. Great meeting.
All right, thanks, Stan. The, we had a powwow the Friday before spring break, which wasn't great scheduling in terms of people being here and things, but, because I wasn't. But there's a ton of people at the powwow, and people are really, really excited about the next powwow. I know there was concerns about facilities uses and things like that. The reports I got is that every area that was used was cleaned really, really well, much cleaner than it is typically after basketball bans and things like that, so. Their families are really, our families from Slalal and the Moose Side were very, very excited about that, that activity. That was good. Cleanlaw Street abandoned, we've been talking about that for a while, the street that goes through here, kind of. The city typically hasn't abandoned streets of late, and however, they think that Cleanlaw made all these streets do that. Again, what would happen with that is that we would get half of it, and then the neighbors, so Gene Undergo would get part of the street as it goes back there, and then the Forest Service on would, would get half of, half of that street. And so it would add space, do several things for us, it would add space to our campus, and it would create kind of a safety area, too, because it's not maintained at all. So it's really dry and brushy back there and things like that. So the city's working through the paperwork right now to help move this forward. So hopefully, we can get it going in the next month or two, and get, and get that ready to go by the time the next school year starts, so.
So does that, we don't end up with a deed to it, it becomes no man's space.
Correct.
Association against or something like that, we don't actually get a deed to the, our half of that street.
Yeah.
There's still, it still could be a street, some down the port, down, down the way to.
Yeah, just, just, just the way that's set up and how the Barley Junction, or whatever it was called back in the day, the way that's set up, there's really not a space for a street to go there at this point in time, that could change, I know, things, things change, and and laws and guidance changes.
Well, we can manage the fire danger better.
Oh, for sure, well, yeah.
Yeah.
Take care of that. Yeah, because it'd be bad if something happened.
Yeah, it's pretty dangerous.
It would, it would happen so fast, and all the green house lights would be gone almost instantly, so. Sort of making some progress on that, Josie mentioned budget development, of course, you know, what would a budget season be without talking about how terrible everything is, we actually did have a superintendent's meeting today, and we have rivers planning to cut, they need to cut 4.1 million dollars from their budget, North Law, so a rule over $2 million from their budget. So it's kind of a challenge, it's always a challenging time in school budgeting and things like that. People are, have growing concern about the May revenue forecast, obviously, that's a big thing, and that's what we'll really learn, how much money we're going to get for next year, but with the economy doing what the economy's doing at this point in time, there's concern that the May revenue forecast is going to be terrible, and then any ticket school, so this, excuse me, could end up being one of the years where the budget process goes on through the summer. And, and that's happened for 40 years where you like this, but we've had years where we found out how much money we're getting in October for the school year and things like that, so that's something that we'll have to keep a close eye on. One interesting thing in Duffer, though, and this has been true, true of us while, is there's a ratio with the state school fund, the December to June ratio, and basically, it's this, the trajectory of school enrollment and things typically go like that, the second half of the year, it's actually figured into the state school fund and things like that, state school fund tapers off as, as the year finishes. And this year, and really most every year, our, our numbers are continuing to go up. And, and that's a, that's a challenge for sure, but in terms of getting money for, for school, that's a good thing, so. We'll continue the budget development, and no full wall, we'll adopt a budget in May, and approve a budget in June, that could change in July. So that's just the nature of school funding. Spring sports stuff, we, as you shall recall, we had some issues getting a couple of co-ops with the Dallas High School. And tho- those are rolling, one of the things, though, one of the concerns that, that folks from the Dallas had was that kids from Duffer would displace students from the student athletes from the Dallas, and the Dallas, the coaches were really interested in having Duffer kids, so that it would fulfill, would fill out JV teams and things like that. And unfortunately, the Dallas is canceled for the last two weeks, the Dallas has canceled the softball and baseball JV camps, because they don't have enough students, even, even with our students playing in there, so. But, but spring sports is going, track and field's doing well, and we look forward to a great finish to the season. Youth sport camps, Nikki Kaye, as we've stated before, just done a phenomenal job organizing those. We have the basketball camp in the winter time, and we've been, been doing football for the last two weeks, there's two more weekends left for that, 60 or 70 kids at those camps. It's tough, though, with, maybe you talked about baseball and things like, there's so many things going on at this time of year, it's tough to get stuff going and things like that, but I think the youth sports camps are really going to pay dividends in, into the future. As I mentioned, our ADM, our ADM continues to go up. In into the future, as I mentioned, our ADM, our ADM continues to go up, um and. And that's a a good thing in terms of being able to pay for things, um the same issue on women's contest was over the weekend and. Alexis Westfall was the the grand prize winner and Ty Timinski was the runner up at the distinguished. Contest, so we'll create a transcript to you and ladies from Duffer High School. And that is all I have.
Any questions, or Mr. Henderson, no, I mean, yeah, alright, well, thank you for your report there and everything. Then I, I just wanted to confirm, kind of going back to the budgets, both of you had mentioned budget things and Josie, you confirmed the budget meeting is May.
Twelve.
May twelfth, so make sure we all have that on our calendar, I think. We've got uh whoever budget, we got. Business, be appointing budget committee members, and so I just want to make sure everybody has the May twelfth date on calendars, so. Um next on the uh.
Time, five, six.
Six P M.
Yeah.
I didn't have it, I mean, I got scared today, it's like, oh gosh, so luckily I was able to get that on there, so. Okay, I'm gonna move into old business and um. Uh a couple of these next topics coming up, I know uh Jana had quite a bit of input, it's unfortunate that she wasn't able to make it uh tonight, I know she was. Part of the uh electronic device in the school. Which were really the last couple of years and Tim, you were also kind of two of you really trying to. Try to look at that policy and do something, and then there's all kinds of conversations on both the state and federal level, if as far as maybe more of a. A larger policy to impact devices, electronic devices in schools and stuff, either statewide or on a federal basis and everything, and so. Um the policy here, and I'm gonna lean on you, Mr. Henderson, but I believe this was the policy for the school to adopt, so we had something with. That's what we had talked about uh at the last meeting, and. One of the things I remember on that is, you know, kids definitely get suspended everything, and so I guess I'd be interested kind of to know how you. How you guys made some edits to this and what your thoughts were on.
Yeah, and and really, and I think it was Anna brought up the point that why are we punishing kids, let's punish the phones, and so on that. Because early, earlier on, we were talking about kids being suspended and things like that for having phones here too often, things like that, and based on what this is, we just took the offenses and as they have offenses. For instance, the second offense would result in a device being kept in the office all day for three days instead of a kid, um any additional offense resulted in a device. Um kindergarten through eight grades will pass, um devices silent and outside throughout the school day, and typically, there's no problems. Um at that point, at those, at those grade levels at this point in times, they should have done a good job, there's some uh watches that are. Um give out some electronic devices, really, no relevant, there's some of those, but those would need to go away. Um high school students, the high school level, and the devices are silent and outside during the classes, they can access the devices during passing time as a lunch. Um and then all all staff members take the devices outside during the workday on those devices. They use first school function, staff members can access the devices during non-student contact time, students shouldn't see staff members' devices during class exception, we're to see. Situations for work related, and as we've talked about through this whole process is that we have this first year, we had dual authentication, correct? Yeah, and everybody, that one person, that's how they do the dual authentication, it's on the second one, so um it's. I don't know, it's a tough one, but what we talked about was adopting this and piloting it for the remainder of the school year and. And assessing over the summer, um how it worked and what we want to do moving forward, interestingly, there's now a bill in the Oregon legislature. That um is light on details like a lot of bills are, um until until the very end, but there's a bill in the legislature that would. Um get tough on cell phones in schools and who knows what that is, we don't totally know what that will be. Um if it, if it will get through the legislation, be approved and signed by the governor, um time will tell on that, but I mean, there's the potential that. We adopt this, do a pilot, maybe do something nice and fault, so. Other questions?
Um I would shift maybe about the. Uh we're gonna pilot for the rest of the year, but we're not gonna purchase the yonder.
Okay, just a clarification, yeah. Okay, I'm just gonna start with you, Mr. Payne, and any questions or comments, and you're involved with the committee that took a look at this and stuff.
Yeah, uh the the committee and the talks I've had is the. The only sticking point I have here is students will have them during passing time, I can see them going, it's passing time, it's passing time, I'm on my own time. Um to and from classes, social media, stuff like that, so the only thing I came to the table with today is if we want to entertain it, I. I'd strike out. I'd strike out, they can access their devices during passing times at lunch and replace it with, they may access their devices during lunchtime only.
There's nobody else here who was on that committee, there's. I think that. Yeah, I mean, I I agree with the. Just that it comes down to enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, the difficulty of that. The monitoring, I, yeah, I mean. I know how. If that's, if that's practical. I mean, I think that this is definitely a good start. And I guess. Without having been a very, maybe getting input from the staff who gave target enforcement, that rule. It's hard to think that, which I assume that was some staff in the part of the. Committee, and what were their thoughts, that's not part of it, sort of discussion.
Like, it's just getting out of the ends as any way possible.
Stan, what's your?
Managing like, unfortunately, I think we don't need more work around here. Lock them up to the day. Well, I I don't know, I just see. Why, why put that on the staff or anybody to to manage if they look in the passing time, if they're following on?
So you're saying leave it the way it is, or you're saying don't give them access at all during the day?
I just don't like to see more of a man hour being tied up, this is, this project is. It's crazy, but it's necessary to do, I don't, I don't quite know, like say, I wasn't part of that committee either, so I don't know what all the discussions were. Uh it's just, we're like, well, I I don't know, I don't know what to answer, but.
I mean, we're looking at now, and we're, it's been two months of piloting this.
Yeah.
Um and it may be.
Actually, a month and a half.
A month, yeah, it's a, it's a very short pilot, because um so. Yeah, I mean, I I I'm kind of torn, because I I totally agree that, like, it would just be better if they didn't access it all day, and that would be great. I just, in terms of like, you know, envisioning high school students transitioning between classes and figuring out like how, how, you're not gonna catch them all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so. Figuring out a way to do that effectively would might not be ready to do that, I guess is my concern, or if I don't have a plan, you don't have a plan to do it. Then you put yourself in a position of creating a policy that's not enforceable. And that's almost worse in some ways, just because. It it. So it creates an environment for for, you set it up to fail.
Are there a lot of school districts that have policy enacted now, we can, we can, we can pay or have those guys, let them learn the lessons.
Did you talk to?
Let let somebody else.
Well, I mean, it's typical policies and Sean Kalswana and I visited Baker High School and we were there for the state basketball tournament, and they're. They're big into yonder stuff, and their policy is all about yonder, now kids can't use things like that, and there's cell phones all over the place, they're not following the policies. Um and that's the problem, if that's policy, you better be able to enforce it, and I think it's a really good question whether we can or not. Um at this point in time, the other thing, my other concern now, this is really just came up in the last month, but the bill to the legislature, what's that, what's that gonna do? Um you know, are they gonna come up, I think they'll tough, talk tough for a while and then uh probably then I call.
Well, maybe really simple, so you lock them up all day, and we don't have plenty of pouches, we don't have plenty of anything, lock them up. Be the three o'clock.
Yeah.
And that's my, my concession is lunchtime, I'm thinking of like in business, like they. Employers, I can say, well, you gotta have it out lunchtime, um may I ask the chair's permission to get input from? The teachers, so we've enforced it, so can you hear the conversation, uh the proposal is? For them having it in passing time, my concern is passing time then extends, I'm just asking, so. Is it reasonable to have them have it in passing time and lunchtimes or just lunchtimes or not at all?
I would say to not have it during passing time at all, because it's just like getting an added. What they want, and then it's hard for them to give it back, and it's only like three minutes, four minutes, whatever it is. It's not necessary, it's just gonna be the same fight that we've always had, and I mean, lunch.
That would be two. A lot of high schoolers leave, leave campus for lunch, so we can't enforce it.
Right, certainly.
And if they're leaving campus, they probably, you know, parents, they should have, like, they're driving or whatever, they should.
The policy works great in the middle school, they have to have it away off, out of sight. They can't, they didn't carry it around in their pocket all day, and then every morning, they can cut it. Maybe high school can rather get lunch, I guess, would probably be fair, but. I would say not during passing time, if if we're actually gonna have a policy that works.
That can go to sort of the audience.
Yeah, I think from the high school perspective. If we're gonna crack down on them, then they just can't have it during passing time.
Yeah.
They just can't put it down, it's so bad.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we will only know once we try and and if we have to modify it, Josie.
I hear that and I totally agree with it, I do, just from a. Logistical standpoint, we do not have staff assigned to monitor hallways, to monitor transitions between the upper building and the lower building. I don't know who is going to enforce that rule, and I agree, I would hate to make a policy that. That they're getting away with breaking because nobody's monitoring it, which makes it easier for them to try to break that rule during class time. Like, that's just my take on it, we don't have anybody monitoring those areas, so how are we going to get in trouble?
Yeah, I mean, the the reality is, it it has to be, I mean, it it might be something that. A few people are gonna get sacrificed to the, you know, there's gonna be some kids who break it and get caught, if you, if you, you know. Either way, no matter where we start this, there're gonna be some kids who are becoming examples, and there're gonna be kids who get away with it. And there's unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to stop everything, um so I guess. It sounds like, you know, Tim and you, you guys are both on the, all the, the all day, it's not just possible. But I have a feeling Jana would be as well, I can speak to that, I hope you feel the other. With an actual high schooler.
I won't tell you that compensation. I, I guess from my stand on it is, I think that something's better than nothing, and I think keeping them out of the classroom should be the first priority. And I think that's what this policy does, and then allow the next, I mean, essentially, you got about six weeks.
Yes.
And uh allow this pilot test period to run through the six weeks and then kind of reassess, and if if we need to tighten it up. To uh, you know, just lunch or lunch and break and that, and make that adjustment over the summer break. And set the expectation as those kids come back in, a couple of the other things I was noting here is, I. You know, through this whole thing, I really think there needs to be an education components for the kids, and I think that would help. To some extent with the transition, I'm not saying it's gonna make a huge difference, but. I just, with the whole yonder thing and everything else, I think it's, I think there's some education to be had for the students on that. And then on the staff member comment, I guess my thing there, I think that's even gonna be a challenging thing. Uh hold the staff accountable, and I think there probably should be an edit to the employee handbook. Uh outlining this policy in there too, to set the expectations for that is. When Mr. Henderson said, we all gotta have these darned phones to sign into our bank accounts or different accounts and stuff, and so it's a required thing to have to have. But yet, we're saying we don't, we don't want it in the classroom, so it's a little tricky, but. Summarize all that, I guess my, my personal opinion would be run with the policy as stated and allow, allow the pilot. Pilot project to happen, do the best we can to keep them out of the classroom and then reassess it at the end of the year. On what worked and what didn't, and then decide what you want to change during this next school year, I think something's better than nothing.
Oh, I definitely think we need to enact a policy today, I think, sort of down to the.
Yeah.
Maybe you're gonna get this, this, the the process, there's no way.
I just think you got two, you got two key people that are missing, Jan and Mrs. Whitley, that were deeply involved with this, and I think we'd all love to hear their feedback. And I think um I think, you know, Kristen was involved with writing this policy, and so I'd be, I'd be prone to go with it as stated. Knowing that we may not be to one hundred percent, but at least we're making an effort to try to keep the funds out of the classroom, and and if this passing thing is a true issue. Uh hearing what, you know, Josie and Jack are talking about, the enforcement piece of it, I think is a concern. Uh I just, I think about too, the bathroom breaks are gonna skyrocket, because everybody's wanting to go to the bathroom and check their messages, or. You know, the mom's supposed to get home and type of thing, and it's gonna be challenging, uh to deal with, so. So that's my, that's my, my two cents.
Split two in two.
Well, yeah, that's fine, so. And that, so I mean, you know, there's no motion on the, on the floor right now, the uh, the, you know, the packet has. Is asking for a motion on this, uh conducted pilot for the main school year, so.
Well, I feel like you don't do it tonight, we're basically not doing it this school year, because we don't have time.
Yeah, even, you know, they, they're making now, and. I don't know that, you know, you get this in place tonight, you can see how tomorrow it starts, and in my mind, there has to be some conversation, communication on this sort of thing. With staff and students and parents, this is, this is what's gonna happen, and we're gonna do it starting this day and that day, so. So I mean, I'd be willing to entertain a motion. And you have with the recommendation is there, but you guys feel strongly about making some edits to that.
Jan is aware of this policy, and Kristen is as well, as you know it, so I could simply, they're okay with it.
Yeah, I don't, I would assume, I guess my assumption would be, Kristen would be. More aware of it, I don't know, Jan may be aware of it, just by the end of the packet. But it can't be overstated, the teachers are not gonna stand up all the way and tell kids to put their phones away, so then we have a person at the front office. Stand, look out the window and say, put your phone away, put your phone away, put your phone away, put your phone away, we don't have the ability to enforce it, I mean, that's really the reality.
Well, and I think that part of this process is just putting, you know, that it's gonna work and it's not gonna work, and um. I think that this is, as you said, we have to start center. And, yeah, I think, I think we all think that the kids should. Uh but we also, I mean, what I've kind of come around and around and like reading articles in the paper about what happens with the underpaid pouches and the way that kids. Work their way around that stuff because they're good at it. You know, I think, I think this is a good start and and it gives us a way to try things and like. And be like, okay, then you tried it this way and it wasn't enough, and or or. Actually, it worked great, and kids, because they only have three minutes, I mean, we, there, there are going to be some kids for whom it does work. But it gives us a place to start, it's something that has been through the committee and through the staff. You know, I, I mean, I agree, that that ideally, we would wanna. You know, put it away, I I agree, we want to bring it to school, but they live in their cars at the high school or whatever. Um but I mean, I would make a motion to adopt and attach policy and see how it goes. And then, you know, with the assumption that we may get guidance from the state, that will probably be an unfunded mandate to buy yonder pouches or something. Uh and then, and then we have, you know, like I said, a pretty short pilot period, we'll see how it goes. And if, you know, we get feedback that says, yeah, that didn't work at all, kids were still messing around and still causing disruptions between classes. Um which, you know, we're gonna have some of that for sure, but maybe enough of the critical mass of students. It's not gonna work, and you know, the whole school makes it extra challenging because we have different ages and different, you know, and they're mixing together in the hallways. And then that, that's second one. Concern, but that's, and that's probably not too long terms, the other schoolers see the high schoolers doing it. My, my, my vote would be to approve it as is, and then, like you said, be ready, and it's not to say that we can't modify it this year. If like after a couple of weeks, really, yeah. Maybe come back in May and try something else, or.
Yeah, because I'm technically. Yeah, because technically, we've got here means, we play this times.
Yeah, we're gonna go. I mean, obviously there's some of the time, but that's my, my motion.
So how long would it take to get this run?
I think next week, certainly, like next Monday, Monday.
Well, I sort, I support the motion, the motion, I, uh. It's some, it's something if this is where we gotta go, I think it's gonna be a horrible management problem, but for two, two months. You know, let's jump in and see, I guess.
I think either way, it's a management problem, no matter which method we go with. It's just. I do, I think unfortunately, it might, like, that, that what we need to see is like. Does it, does it really make anything better for the teachers?
Yeah.
Um, and if it doesn't, then we need.
Well, at least evaluate it with some degrees of success.
And then we probably are gonna have to go back to.
I guess I'll, I'll second your motion. I, I just think it's a train wreck, but uh, we gotta do something. Let's just see. It's only two months, so.
Was.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll second your vote.
So a motion, we have a motion in a second. And so we've had a fair amount of discussion on this, but I'm gonna ask if there are any further discussion or points you guys wanna make on this. Yeah, all those in favor um, of the motion stated and basically accepting the policy as written, presented to the board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Underneath post. Okay. Alright, so I guess with, with administration, just to clarify, is gonna aim to um, have this in the. In fact, as of next Monday, the twenty first, and so I'm sure there'll perhaps some communication around this week, well pertaining to that.
Yes.
I mean, I think the key word here is pilot.
Yeah. One top topic too, so. Next, under the old business and the move into the uh, board retreat planning. And so um, just kind of a couple, a couple of comments that I wanted to make before we kind of dive into that. And so in the packet, there's a list of uh, eight potential items. These are items that we've talked about for either several weeks, months, or even years as far as addressing and trying to dedicate some time where the board could sit down and. And focus in and spend some time working on this. And so what we have. Uh, on the schedule right now is on Tuesday, April twenty second, which will be next Tuesday from uh, four P M to eight P M. Of having a time where the board gets together in a retreat and um. Dives into a couple of these topics. And so in my mind, I mean, that's four hours of time. And so we'd probably, you know, wouldn't wanna pick more than probably three topics to go through because we're gonna wanna take a little bit of a break in there. Um, the other thing I just wanna acknowledge, I mean, uh, as we look at these, as I look at these, I consider anyways, you know, we're gonna have some changes on the board. And so what, what if any of these items that we have listed on here may be impacted by that? And so uh, the May elections are coming up. We've got uh, my position that I did not run for uh, this year. So there will be a new person there and then two of our other existing board members have opponents also. And so there's a chance come July first, you're gonna have three new board members, one to three board members for sure and stuff. And so I just, I, I wanna mention that because as I read through this list, some of these items may be best if they were held until. The new board uh, is put back together uh, at that July meeting. And one of those items in particular I'm looking at is, is listed as number eight, the new superintendent onboarding. In my, my opinion, I think that would be best to have a new board together, going through the uh, new superintendent onboarding. But I just kind of wanna throw that out there as a, as a sample or example for you guys and stuff. And so uh, just read through the list. It's on, it's on here if you guys have it. Requirements for community service. And this is something we've been talking about for well over a year. And then we had one of our students come and present to the board on, on uh, some cords for. Uh, graduation and such, and then conversations that we've had on community service. We've talked about what community service means. Uh, is it, is it. Um, different types of community service, almost like different sectors or different type of work that would constitute for uh, community service. Um, for a school week and that's uh, that was talked about a few years back, a few years back, probably five years back. And then uh, more recent discussions, um. Uh, district goal setting for training topics to pursue. Uh, individual board member responsibility policies and policy review, board member responsibilities outside board meetings. Boundaries between administration and board directors. And then next is the review of school size, teacher cost per student is due for prepared to uh, become a two ways in high school. And really talking about how district students, in district students, uh, double having two classes. And these bubbles that are going through like the elementary school right now. Uh, board member trainings, uh, when newly elected. Uh, and then number seven there is audit, audit training orientation given a broad spectrum of our budget and finance process. And then number eight was the new superintendent onboarding. And so those are, those are the eight that got captured that I think we've been talking about. Is there anything you guys feel is missing from that list? You feel like what's on that list are probably things that we should be focusing on, okay? Is there anything that scans out as far as, hey, this one is a number one priority? We definitely wanna talk about this one on the retreat. Or anything that, or maybe in vice and versa of that is anything that you think, hey, maybe we could wait until. Um, you know, later, late, later in the summer or when the, when the new boards go back together in July or anything there, so.
I thought like number three, district goal setting and, and trainings and topics to pursue, like that kind of covers a lot of territory.
Okay.
Uh, and that's something that we could start now.
Okay.
Um. I think it's reasonable, like, I feel like. We're not gonna have enough information within the next week about the four days of school week to like. Really dig into it. I feel like there's gonna have to be a committee to discuss that because um. There's a lot of questions about like calendars and what exactly that meeting or even like the Marcy was talking. Does that mean the teachers are working on those Fridays? What does that mean for kids? And so I, this is, I don't think that's something that you decide, you know, just one day. We're like, oh, this will work or it won't work. We, there's a lot of information that would have to be added. How that affects seat time, how that affects our obligations, um, how that affects our employees who are not uh, salary. Budgets, like, you know, does that mean you're adding school days to the end? And one of the K twelve issues of, and you know, but again, this is, this is why I think this needs more, we need more time to do, get. For the people who, to do research and sort of form a committee. To like, I think that it would be reasonable at that meeting, at that thing, at the retreat, for us to make a list of. Questions about the four day week, but not necessarily spend like an hour and a half talking about it. Does that make sense? These, this is what we would need to do to even consider this. This is a reasonable timeframe for that time to, but like in a week, we're not gonna have all that information and we're certainly not gonna be able to make a decision. Um, in that, like, I mean, this is, this, this is a much more elaborate topic. So I think it's reasonable to maybe set aside like fifteen to twenty minutes to sort of make that list. But that's not the primary focus, so. That particular meeting, instead of like, here's a list of things to make another meeting. Because, because other people's one means.
Basically you're saying, is it standalone, it's a standalone conversation and it's very complex?
Yeah, and it requires like a committee, like, and, and research, that we're not gonna be able to complete the list.
Well, that's a good idea. I know our previous meeting tonight, you know, there's a lot of questions came up. I had a lot of questions for Josie. For the financial department, and you know, I think she can put together a spreadsheet to just.
Well, I think Josie can come up with those numbers until you create proposals. That fit those numbers. So she can't come up with a number about the calendar unless you tell her, oh, okay, this is what it looks like. Now run the numbers. So that's like.
But then when Marcy was talking about that. That puts a whole different spin on it, which I, I think's got a lot of potential to sure have a discussion about that and how that would plug in because that.
Well, the reality of, 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 you know, how that works and, and, and they got lots of input here, but it would be more. How this actually works is what we need to see.
I think it bothers me, I really came up tonight, was everyone, everyone up and talked about stuff. We're trying to do more stuff with one less day. It just seemed like, let me do that six day a week. There's so many problems everywhere.
So.
It's, you know, it's just crazy. I don't know.
Yeah, reinforcing my point that that's much more complicated, uh. You know, that, that that's not a conversation we're quite ready. You know, really have completely, but it's, but like I said, if we could make a, an action plan to sort of. See if it's something we're even considering. And if, you know, and it may be something that couldn't happen quite as quickly as, as the staff would like it to, but I just. Or, or we could look at it and be like, no way this isn't working. Like, we don't know that yet because we don't have that information.
Well, just the cost per student, those numbers are starting to surface now. I mean, you know, investigating that, that opens up a whole other.
Right, yeah.
Point of discussion.
So many spreadsheets, Stan.
So is there, and you've mentioned number three is being a very important topic, district goals uh, for trainings and topics to pursue. Is there another one or two that you feel is uh, kind of something we really should consider as far as the retreat?
Um, and I feel like three and five are kind of tied to each other. Because we're talking about goal settings and topics, so like. You know, one of the big topics for us has been over the years ago that we're seeing and the fact that we're having to split off grades and. And then the const, and now the basic intergrades are rolling into the upper grades. Um, how that impacts teacher cost per student, uh, staffing levels. And sort of the practicalities of physical space in the building. Um, so I think three and five are kind of like go hand in hand. So, am I misinterpreting?
No, I just, I was gonna ask Jan and Tim, do you guys, would you guys agree with that or?
Yeah, there's the only two, as I count them up, there's only two that stand alone. With the anticipation of a different makeup of the board.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't wanna get into a meeting where we set board member training ideas, audit training, and then we have to do it again.
Hmm.
Um, so.
Like six and seven need to wait. So, you know.
So I'd be, I'd be good with district goal setting, what we have, what we want to do. And then obviously that would be with Kristen setting the tone. For the upcoming school year and then review school size, which is part of that. So a way to skin the cat is since the teachers do wanna be heard about a four day school week. Is it possible to only hone in on those two things and then listen to the teachers on that twenty second barring or? If it works for their schedule and those are only two things that I think we should tackle out of this list with the unknown of. Make so the four day school week, yeah, three and five, they're both kind of same.
Yeah.
Um, and then the four day school week and then the rest of those are.
I mean, the community service is one that's not a standalone.
Yeah, but I think we could tech that.
I don't think that's a big hours.
So I guess, uh, when I was open, I was on a four day school week, I must think it's its own. I guess my own opinion, its own deal. Um, and a lot of times on the retreat, it's really, it's just a matter of sometimes the retreats are set up in a way where really it's time for the board to work through. As far as the board goes. And so I'm just concerned, I think, to do the four day school week, right? We need quite a bit of outside input on that.
That's a separate committee.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Maybe leave it off the, I would, I would at this point kind of be in favor of leaving it off with. I mean, it's, it's tough decision tonight because we're missing two key people. And so, but if we left it off and then had some conversations to see what we wanted that to look like. I think, I do like the comment that Jan had around, uh. We need to carve out fifteen to twenty minutes in there and just like, what is it that we wanna see? Kind of that gives some marching orders as far as trying to get some more information, what's important to us. What are some like, what are some like critical things that we would feel important?
Yeah, yeah, no, I prefer, I'd prefer that when we get to the district calendar adoption is to. Uh, create a, create a special committee that would be appointed by the chairman. So, but we'll get to that.
So, um. I was just gonna mention, so I think, I think I would like to see the requirements for community service beyond there, just, I think.
Yeah, so I think that's a pretty straightforward.
And so that could be a, a shorter session uh, item to talk about. Uh, and so I'm, would you guys agree, I guess, that maybe six, seven and eight, which is board member training, audit training, new superintendent onboarding? Would that be best post July?
I mean, it makes sense to, you know, but you know, we may not know till after the election, you know, how many people are gonna need, uh. Need that. And I, yeah, because I, I do think it, it seems, um. It says board member trainings when newly elected. I guess the question is, is that a conversation about like, hey, when I was elected, I wish I'd had this training? Or is this giving them a list?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think some of the, the board member training when newly elected comes from like almost an onboarding. Packet with different bits of information and, and maybe even someone one time, you have the superintendent, the finance person going through. Finances and going through some of the policy and working to the board.
Yeah, I think it would be useful to make a list with the new board members of things that would be useful and, you know, it turns the most, I mean, we said. But like, not necessarily doing any new board member trainings, but because like, like Tim said, this other stuff like, uh, that new board members. But the, like figuring out in anticipation of new board members. Making the list of things that would be helpful and, you know, things that, you know. Frank and Stan might not remember when he was on board. But uh, there, you know, you're, when you get, when you start on this board, there's a lot of information that's new. And even, you know, like even as a teacher, you know, the school was a different experience. I'm teaching, last year, there was a lot of stuff. But, but, you know, it's, it's different and, and to understand it, so. Um, I think it would be a useful exercise to make a list of things that. Would be useful, but, but not, not like doing the training, but just making the list of, you know, the things we would like the staff and um, maybe. Some thoughts for board members about what they think new board members might want to learn.
So I guess that being said, would it be safe if, I'm just, I'm not listing as any specific priority, but. Community service and then uh, three, three and five, which is district goal setting and then review sizes of school and teacher cost information. That would, that's gonna be probably a couple hour with those two. And if we did uh, fifteen to twenty minutes on. Um, with the, just the board talking about what they would need on a four day week and then maybe another fifteen to twenty minutes on. I think that's probably more than we can get through, but we'd have to uh, do that. I think part of the success of this is um, is for us to come prepared with some notes and thoughts on these different subjects. And so we can, we can go through and, and really dive into it and, and uh, and stuff. Because I, you know, the, the, the big need of that one is the district goal setting for training. And then the review of the size. And so I think that's talking about. A lot of different things from the finances to the um, what our, what our model size is, where it's most economical. Uh, out of district students. I mean, there's a whole bunch packed into, into that alone. I think we'd have to kind of have some general items listed underneath there and I think also.
Four ties to six.
Four ties to six.
Board under responsibility policies, policy, I mean, that's, that's kind of all part of the new group member.
Yeah, and I think uh, the superintendent onboarding, I think that was, you know, that kind of came out of the comments, the OSBA offering to come in. And uh, and help with the training on that. And so. I, I haven't heard anything from Vince recently and, but I think that was part of our contract with them and they would come and do that. So you probably should look at getting that scheduled at some point, um. Late summer, maybe before school year starts but after July. Yeah, so, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna list that down, uh, these items down and then that's what we'll target at. Our work to develop a, a general summary of a, of an agenda, a lot of specifics, but I would ask that. Um, that the fellow board members really be thinking about with that, what some of these things mean to you, what questions you may have. Yeah, I'll send, I'll send out the agenda to you guys and then I'll also reach out to Mrs. Whitley. On helping, between her and Mr. Henderson, helping with some of the district goal conversations and class sizes and, you know, and, and. If there's specific things you guys wanna see, please let me know what these, what those are. And that conversation alone, I'm just kind of concerned that it's gonna wander quite a bit. So how do we keep it structured and actually get some outcome of what we're looking for? Yeah, yeah, and, and I, by no means do we need to solve the world's uh, you know, planning and goal. Uh, you know, planning and goal setting in in a one session and stuff too, so it may be something that. We come out of it with a few things of action plans you want to be forward with or want to see more of or what have you, and then, um, further work down the road.
We've actually got some pretty absolute stuff to be created. You know, two classrooms and now they're getting to the junior high or. They're gonna merge into high school, but we can visualize pretty easy what's gonna happen, what our cost per student's gonna be then. With, you know. The bigger numbers coming in, so. I think it's pretty. Pretty concrete information that we have it. Before is, uh, we'll have to make decisions like that.
Well, there's, I don't think there's only decisions made, it's more just. We're bored having some time to talk through some things and. And I think I could see if there's hard decisions or motions to be made.
Yeah, that's what what school looks like in three, four years. With the with the influx of these four students in junior high and high school, well, they'll just. We're looking pretty absolute there, just get rid of that.
Okay, is everybody good with that? Yeah, so. Uh, let me read back what I what I made comment on there. Um, so basically. We would, uh, the topics that we'd have would be the community service item, uh, bullets three and three and five, which is the district goal setting. And then also reviewing of the class size and teacher cost per student. And then spend about fifteen to twenty minutes talking about what the board would need, uh. For further conversation on the four day week and then also, uh, spend about fifteen to twenty minutes talking about. The, um, board member training packet, not necessarily basically just making a list, not going through the training, but making a list of what we feel would be important. New board members to have as they come. So that's, that's what I've got notes on here is is, uh, the topics, uh, for the retreat. Did I get that close? Okay. So if we want to make a motion on that, uh, we can go ahead and do so.
So I'll make a motion to set. A discussion about community service. Uh, let's see, so items one, three, five and two. Which is the, so the community service, the board member, uh, district goal settings. Uh, review of school size and, um, a list for the four days school, represent all the things.
And the board, yeah, the board train.
Oh, and the board training list as topics for the board retreat.
No one wants to make a second because I don't want to repeat that. All right, uh, any further discussion, I, and I just want to say, I think we're gonna have to really be, you know, on point that I think. You know, sit four hours seems like a long time, but there's a lot of subject matter and just said, so. Okay, so I got, uh, Anne is the motion and Tim is the second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, here now, always in favor of the motion is as stated about the topics for the, uh, board retreat, signify by saying aye. Will we be captured all that? So the next item we have on here is the, um, policy CBB recruitment and appointment of superintendent and through the second reading. On that, Mr. Anderson, I'm gonna ask you some assistance on here to talk through this.
All right. Yeah, so one, one of the interesting things here is prior, you know, our existing policy is CBB and CC. CBC together, um, and and obviously it's changed, um, then, so we have two separate policies here. To deal with, uh, um, first one is recruit and appointment of the superintendent. One of the things that was requested last month. Was the, uh, existing language, so the existing CBB and CBC. It is behind the, um, new, uh, policy, we're reading for the second time, but this would be the. Second reading of CBB. Which frankly doesn't say it, hold on.
So the second, the second reading, basically, we still bring it back, typically bring it back one more time, but I. Ask the board, is there anything specific in here in language that you're seeing, want a question or? Uh, comments or edits you you suggest for this document?
Yeah, the only one. The only one that I have is, um, changing the language. The language under CBC. Four paragraphs down, uh, where it says the district may provide health benefits for superintendent that is no longer employed by the district until the superintendent. One reaches sixty five years of age or two finds new employment that provides health benefits. Um, I'd like to see that stricken out and put in there. To provide what we are legally. Bound to. An RS codes for the employee upon termination or whatever, what it may be. Uh, the reason for that is, is if you get a board who is. Uh, compassionate toward their superintendent for whatever reason they leave, they still, they can have the. Potentiality to pay for their insurance so they're sixty five years of age while they work at McDonald's, and I don't know. Not that I would say that would happen, but it leaves that open for the school to be on that. Three board members can make that happen. By relationship rather than policy, does that make sense? So. Even having the option of paying for their health insurance. Till they're sixty five or finds new employment, that provides health insurance. I'm not a fan of the may. That we may do that. Hey, so we're okay with policy CBB though? Yeah, I didn't see anything.
Um, I'm gonna think back, uh, last month, we talked about that May on. Uh, on CBC, we talked about the May on there, I don't remember, I think this has been edited. From what we originally. Um, and I, at that time, I'm trying to remember the content of it, and I think it was allow the board to make a decision. It gives us the option, but by no means is it suggesting we will or won't do that, and I guess, uh, if. The, my, my counter to attempt would be as if the board, if you had three members of the board that felt strongly on that, they could just go change the policy and then do.
Yeah.
Anyways, you know, so it's. It just, it's a little bit of the crystal ball trying to predict the future on what the situation is and and such. So. And it's a second reading of the CMC also, so. Yeah, I I don't really have a strong feeling either way.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the thing that sticks out, you know.
Really, you would do that? No, I mean, if they're fifty, that would be an awful expense, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it was like, oh, they paid for two months until they turn sixty five because they worked here for. That's a whole different dog in the, but, you know, yeah, we just.
But it is a negotiating. Point of view that, uh, you can use that. Sometimes you need to clean the house, but yeah.
Oh, you get them to retire, is that what you think is there?
Well, that's.
It's not a good, it's not a bad toy to have, right?
Once, once upon a time, that was a fairly popular way to, how people decide to. Seek other opportunities officially.
It's not as cheap as hell.
And it's, and it's the second reading.
I mean, if it's not, in the policy, can't you do it anyway? It's not like it says you can't do it.
It's a spin the policy, negotiate a contract.
I think it's sort of, it's implying, like, if you didn't read it, you would think to ask for it, because I would.
Yeah, I don't know, it's just, it's just one of the things where it's like, I would not write this like this, so I just bring it up.
Uh, Stan, you got any? Comment on on this? Okay, you'll have another opportunity next week, Anne, and you may have.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I believe that.
It opens the doors, what you're saying.
Yeah, well, it's like, I don't think anybody would necessarily think to ask for that unless they saw that on there, so it was says you can. You know, if it wasn't written on there, they wouldn't. Think that is a reasonable to ask.
So we.
Is this is a, is this a OSBA policy?
Yes.
Uh, do we feel strongly enough, we want to suggest that that get removed for the third reading?
No, we we can't play more, it's.
Um, all right, any further discussion?
Yes, yeah, final, final. Yeah, you can change it.
Uh, okay. My hearing for discussions, we'll keep going. Um, district calendar. Adoption, and so. I'm gonna pull this, uh, I'm sure I have. You know, and some discussion to have on on this, um. So this would be the third reading of the district calendar, um, there's been some. More recent conversations around a four day, uh, school week with students and staff. Uh, I'd like to just go around the table here at the board, uh, specific to. Uh, your thoughts on adopting this calendar and on, uh, tonight. I don't think there's anything pressing that we have to adopt it, um, but at some point, you're gonna need to adopt a calendar soon, so planning can be made. Budgets can be put together, uh, for this next year, and so keep in mind, we got a budget coming up. Budget meeting coming up for May twelfth, um, and, uh, the different. Calendars and school years and stuff is gonna potentially have a pretty big impact on on budgets and such, so. Um, so I'm just gonna start, Anne, I'll start with you, and we'll just go around the table on specific to the.
My instinct is to approve this calendar because it's not like it's something we could change if we had to, like approving this calendar. You know. Is something that. Like, we have to work with the budget numbers, you know, at this point. Um, and we don't even have. We're not even close to having a proposal. Yet, uh, on on alternatives at this point. So my, my instinct would be to adopt it and, you know, with the caveat that we'll listen to the four days information and then. If we have to change it, it's in there. Uh, I'm not sure, but the name is this doctrine, you know, and especially if this is ultimately going to be our. Uh, I guess, I mean, the only. Reason not to adopt it is it's just a confusion that I may cause if you adopt it now and, um, end up changing it. But it's like, how long can you put off the adopting calendar? You've got to agree a budget based on something, you have to present, uh, budget timeline is is not flexible. Right? So we can't, we can't really change our budget. So we have to budget on something and for now, you have a budget on this, um, in order to. Sort of maintain the required. Calendar. Is the caveat that we can can change it if we need to.
Is there anything, uh, specific in this calendar that you? What that, I mean, I think, uh, a couple of differences from the previous years that we had talked about previously. Uh, what, you know, making some adjustments and the in the core type of thing, uh, and then I don't want them. So it was during in-service days for that first Monday after the first year, kids come back on Tuesdays and like traditionally done. Um. I think the spring break, you know, sticking at that, uh. Uh, fourth full week in March that we've done over the last few years, uh. When what's the end of, end of school? Yeah, it's pretty much most of school sort of.
That's the OD, yeah, that's the OD.
Period. Uh, what else was there?
I think that was it.
Can I stand?
Yeah, I defer to the staff that's putting this together because it's all Greek to me, I just know how it affects me as a parent. So that's.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anything's gonna change in terms of the major breaks, like the. You know, holiday breaks like spring break or the winter break. Um. The only thing that can change is maybe if they went. If the decision was made to to modify the Friday schedule or anything, it may change when the school gets out. Um, if if it changes the arrangement of the school, the school days, but. In terms of, I think, one of the big things, because of parents. Which does, as our, as a parent and I, was trying to work around this, when are, when are we gonna have? When the kids get off, out of school for holidays and when it, when it's spring break, when this is that one. So the major travel things, and then obviously there's the. National holidays. And it's, the state, those aren't the change.
I question for Mr. Anderson and Josie, any? Comments you guys have on? On school calendar you want to make?
Well, adopting is the right thing to do, and we get questions starting in February about what the next year's school calendar was largely around vacations and things like that, family.
First day of school.
First day of school, last day of school, spring break, Christmas, we take in a full week at, uh, Thanksgiving, which we click are here. Um. So, yeah, we need to, in terms of, uh, planning, we need to have this.
Yeah, at this point, I mean, school's gonna start on September second.
Yes.
Josie, anything you want to comment on, and you really need this to get your budgeting process going, and we. Board at a later time makes it, makes the decision, whether that's a changes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, all right, so what I'm hearing is that we, as you guys would like to, uh, adopt the calendars presented. Um, and so I'd be willing to interclaim the motion. Uh, from the board, if that's what you guys wish to do.
I'll move this, adopt the policy as presented to us, uh, or I mean, the cal, school calendar as presented.
Okay.
Also, kind of, we've actually twenty three, twenty six district calendars.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second on that motion, is there any further discussion on, uh? Twenty five, twenty six district calendar?
Yeah, the only, only thing I would say is that, um. I'm for for the school to move forward with their thing, but I want to make it loud and clear that I do want to hear. Like, passing this and not saying this is what we're going. Passing this. Denied.
Adopting.
With adopting it is, I still want the teachers know, we still want to see, we still definitely want to see, so it's not a decision to say this is what we're doing. Um, but.
Just sort of a practice.
That's it.
Anything else? All right. Uh, always in favor of adopting, uh, the twenty five, twenty six district calendar as presented, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Or any opposed, hearing none, okay, motion passes. Okay, all right, we're gonna, um. Move into new business tonight, and then the first topic we have there is this wellness committee. And so I'm gonna ask Mr. Anderson if he wants to, if he man's gonna talk, let me agree this, and I.
I will, basically, school leaders in the state are required to. Point for a wellness committee to review all of our, uh, wellness policies and things at least once a year, and so. This actually will take care of that, this group would get together once prior to the end of school year to review what we currently have. It's that simple. And we have two board members on this committee, Tim and Jan are both on this committee, when I talked about Tim and Jan, um, it's. They're on there because they're the only two that, uh. They're guaranteed to be on the board next year.
Okay.
So that's really why they're on there.
Quite a fall, I think, is what you call it. Um, and then all the other, uh, staff names listed on here, and they've agreed that, yes, you're part of it, okay. All right, any questions from the board on this? And is this, is this a, I just want to clarify, is this a newly appointed? Any questions by board on this? Uh, I would entertain a motion to, uh, point, uh, the names that are listed on here.
Uh, I'll make a motion to appoint Christopher Lee, John Paul, Will, Kamal, Malcolm, Malcolm, Tiffany, Kenzler, Josie Turner, Don, Chris, and Janet. Tim Fane, George Peterson, and Lindsay, already to the level.
Okay.
Well, sorry, okay.
Any further discussion on that? Falls in favor of, uh, me and the names listed on here stated, uh, signify by saying aye.
Right.
Any opposed? Then when is this, I guess, Mr. Anderson, is this committee something that? Did you already say they're gonna try to get them together before the end of the year? Get working, so I think this would be good, some good also for the board, just to hear some feedback and what it is they're looking at. Very easy thoughts and that, so. Uh, next on the list, appoint, uh, budget committee positions, and so basically, we've got, um, two different names on here, and so. Uh, basically, we're looking at, uh, appointing, uh, Matthew Clausen, Bert Wyatt, Jeff Lopinski to the budget. Uh, the two for school district budget committee, and these folks would be, uh. Uh, the Duffer School District Budget Committee, and these folks would be, uh, needed to fill seats for the May twelfth meeting. And then, uh, with those folks on there, they give us a full, full set. Anybody else?
Um, I have just a point of clarification, Jeff Lipinski is a. Is going to fill Shelley Hunt's seat.
Okay.
Um, for the remainder of her term, which is two years, so he won't be a full three year.
Okay, because with her being staff. Okay. Okay. Um. And I guess let me just ask the guy, like, Matthew Clausen, and I'm sure Bert Wyatt, but they've all expressed interest in, in this, okay, we're not just. Letter that says, hey, be here on the twelfth. Okay. Um, I'd be willing to accept a motion, uh, of, uh, appointing Matthew Clausen, Bert Wyatt, Jeff Lipinski to the Duffer School Budget Committee.
I'll move we. Appoint Matthew Clausen, Bert Wyatt, and Jeff Lipinski to the Duffer School District Budget Committee.
Okay, we have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor pointing the names listed as the Duffer School Budget Committee, signify by saying aye. All right, uh, the next item on the list, now I've got Lisa Peters here, uh, at the Senate to. Uh, look at the integrated guidance application, and I think is this where we've got a presentation coming?
We have a presentation.
All right.
So we'll go through that, Theresa, if you want to jump in, Theresa, of course, is the, um, person who, I mean, the E S D that's responsible to keep us moving forward. Just fantastic job with that. We started meeting probably, is it November, December, something, Theresa? Um, and then it's the only point at this point in time, and of course, the integrated guidance thing has been, um. Is a new requirement, they basically roll all of the states, most all of the state grants into. And into this. Process. One of the good things about this process is we, we are much better today than we were a couple of years ago, reaching out to our community and things like that. Surveying people, learning about what people are thinking about our school, um, and, and visiting with, uh, one of the great things is that. Uh, we, once again, the shared, a great visitor with Saliva Village, uh, and that's, that's really a great thing, so. We'll zoom through this, and Theresa, interject anything you would like to interject.
Next one. Yeah.
All right, and we'll go through this, what the purpose of the presentation is, the purpose of presentations is that the state requires us to do a presentation. Uh, about those laws that we've done for this background and context, I gave a little bit of that. The fact that the state wants the school districts to actually reach out to state, somebody tipped the state off that maybe the school districts weren't doing a great job communicating with their communities. Um, so I suspect that's what this whole thing came from, plan inputs, plan overview, and what's next for the process. There you go. Okay, and then we'll go through quickly what is, you know, prioritized in the plan, um, from the arrangement that we got, uh, through the process. Um, explain how the plan was developed, hear additional feedback on the plan, now it's been developed from the board directors. And then to, again, see forth through ultimately, we're not sure that this, we were gonna vote with the board and make a motion to approve our plan. All right, um. Again, we're doing what the state has told us to do, which kids related with state legislators, combined process, engagement. Needs a second plan, budgeting and evaluation for the nine programs, the nine grant programs that are, that, that we currently have. Uh, under this umbrella, um, and designed to reduce burden for dentists and improve the, remember which progress. Um, can be measured, one of the inputs of the community that the O D E is, has always gotten and will always get. Is that small school district don't have a bunch of staff members sitting around wondering what they're gonna do today. Um, and not that other school districts do either, but one of the things, E S Ds have become a great part, and Theresa's a great part in helping to do with. Uh, go through all this and, and get through, but there's still quite a bit of work to, to do over the months. All right, aligning programs and. Whole time programs and common goals, all of the things that's what happens.
So, so basically with that slide that gives detailing all of the nine programs, we have the, um. C T E programming, the funding that, uh, Duffer gains from, from its application as your high school success. Which is about ninety-six thousand a year, I believe, um, your student investment account, which I think is about four hundred and two thousand. A year, um, new as of last year, the early literacy grant, which I believe this year it was up to about sixty. It was forty.
From this year, forty-four, next year, sixty-two, yes.
Um, and then also due for, um, accesses the early indicator intervention systems dollars, which is. A small grant that is utilized to support, um. Uh, systems around data, and so I think that Duffer uses that for their, uh, the data suite.
Yeah.
For this, so, um, so that basically is detailing those, it also encompasses Everyday Matters, which is the attendance initiative. Um, the C T E, um, and a variety of others, and so they've aligned all of these. Because they use the similar system to, uh, the similar process, and they have the same, uh, goals that are focused around. Um, engaging your community, et cetera. Thanks, Theresa.
Thank you.
And that's.
Uh, and then there's program purpose continuous improvement planning, uh, one of the things too, anybody who wants to make sure that school districts. Are truly intent upon dating into the, the minutia of the stuff that they do, ask each one of their school district. Uh, how they could, um, make it better for their students in the school districts. Um, I think Everyday Matters, um, what, what we're doing with that school culture, climate safety, both those. Sustainability, that will achieve, uh, very connected learning, um, and. What, what are we doing to, uh, to educate our students around the careers and, um. To help guide them into their futures. High school success, um, you know, what are we up to, a hundred, what'd you say, a hundred fifteen thousand dollars or something on that? On how would your graduation rates, college and career readiness, that money's been around for a little while, kind of assets, you're not looking for a whole hundred thousand dollars. Um, the student investment accounts, um, mental health, behavior moves, and increase active achievement. Um, despite disparities from all the different groups and things like that, and that's the, that's the, that's really cat task for Josie.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's the, the, the business tax that was passed, uh, a few sessions ago. The people didn't like very much, but now it's over four hundred thousand dollars for our school districts, it's quite a bit of money at this point in time. It was a little bit delayed because of, for a number of reasons, the, I mean, the economic challenges, things like that, but that's real for us. Uh, and the U I, I guess, um, data collection and analysis system, which is collaborative to identify. Support for students and the data suite, which is the money that we spent on that suite, so that we're able to access our data to make intelligent decisions. Really, that's. New last year, um, and that initially last year, in fact, I bet this time, well, not that, but I'm sure this time last year, we were budgeting like ninety thousand dollars for that. And that ninety thousand dollars became thirty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars in a hurry. It is growing this year, which is interesting, we're very, very thankful that it's growing. Um, it didn't turn out to be a whole lot for, for this school year, we paid for some teacher's aides and maybe a little bit of career funding back. Um, and then the career and technical education, money, there's not a whole lot of money now, so to be honest, there, there's not a bunch of money. We'll, we'll look at the budget here in a second, but, um, there's not a lot of money there, um, and then just federal school improvement, um. You know, focal group students, who knows what's gonna happen at the federal level at this point in time, so we'll see that that's, uh, one of the areas that we're supposed to focus on. Our planning team, uh, my own planning team, Josie, Kristen, Bonnie, John, Theresa, and Eric Epstein, who's the regional. Uh, instruction coach, and Eric actually participated in that, looking at the, uh, the electronic device policy as well. Right, part of the plan equity lens, are we being equitable to all of our students and things? Um, community, community engagement, we're gonna do, we give, and we did in a number of different ways, we did, um, interviews, uh. We did, um, survey, and then we did some onsite visits as well, I mentioned, but travel consultation over it. Uh, what impact did we have on focal students, um, improving programs, um. And then develop, develop a four-year plan, clear outcomes, strategies, and activities, and of course, those plans are something that you, that. School districts will look at every year and assess as to whether they're making progress. Um, and then I'm thinking, looking at the current plan, we're doing revise. Um, and putting the district equity committees, equity is kind of an interesting thing in our school, which I'd like to think. That, uh, or like, yeah, I think I like to say that we're, uh, we provide the same services for all students. Um. And then recommendations from a quality education model, of course, a quality education model is nothing that came out how long ago? Theresa.
It's been, it's been like in the.
Tenures.
Yeah, more than that.
More than that, yeah, so quality education model was the model that was developed to. Determine how much money it would take to actually run efficient schools in state. Uh, and of course, we've never gotten there because of the way we, we try and fund schools, we're trying not to fund schools, it's just interesting to me. Q E M is still verdicts that we use, so, but that, you know, if, if it was fully funded quality education model, I think we'd be like fifteen thousand dollars per student. Um, and we're not this year, uh, this current school year, we're at eleven five or something, we're no sort of, we're next year. Um, and then recommendations coming from state law, students assess act, act plans, or during the reason regional C T E consortium. Inputs, um, as well. And then the equity lands of, um, tools and decision making, um, the activities that we use to determine we are. For our students and things. Um. You know, just ensuring access for all students, um. That are in the national school, that's all. New engagement highlights, um, really. For me, every year is going to Saliva, that's fun, love, um, and so, so we did spend time over there, and we really had a nice crowd this year. Um, at Saliva, it was really good, right after they opened up their basketball court over there, if you haven't seen their basketball court, it's like. Really cool thing, um, and then what we did, um, is, um, push surveys out and, or. That we developed, pushed out in the community and things like that, and then assess the verdicts that came back. And luckily, we were, um, our community was pretty, and it's just, you know, pretty good about their school district. Um, but barriers do remain, um, and we have, you know, transportation challenges, we're a pretty rural area, then. Uh, families have, um, transportation challenges, we have folks in our school district that don't have the ability to drive their students around and things like that. We do as much as we can, uh, around using a school district vehicles and things like that, but we, um. I think the engagement with community has improved about a bazillion percent in the last three years, so we're excited about that, feel good about the future. Hey, our needs assessment, um. It's based, based on what is mainly in small class sizes, whatever, of course, everybody has a different, um. Idea of what small class size is, so, um, provide high dosage to bring in early, early strength and C T E programs and construction. Early childhood education, health sciences, uh, create supportive, equitable learning environment, fosters foundational leadership skills. And prepare students for future careers, your hands-on, real-world experiences, uh, I think we're being pretty responsive to that at this point in time. And then maintain small pay for your class size and provide intensive reading support. Make sure students receive an relaxed instruction to meet critical early, um, literacy, um, benchmarks. And that's one of the reasons, or the largest reason that we split some class sizes in the early and all entries, and make sure that we're. Um, doing the best job that we can do by the best program for students at that level to give them, and so, um, literacy, early literacy acquisition. All right. Figure right, um. We, we identified, we have some strengths in the literacy C T E program, but areas for growth, attendance, we do, you know, we struggle with attendance. Um. We do, we struggle with attendance, um, past school districts do, we did implement the attendance team this year that meets every Monday to assess. What's going on with the tenants in our school district and things, and I think we have, that group has had some success, there's more communication with families. When students, um, aren't coming to school on a regular basis, and things like that, struggling readers, um, graduation rates, it's tough. When you look, um, at data from a school district our size, though, if one senior doesn't, if you have twenty kids in a class and one senior doesn't graduate from high school. It doesn't look great, if you have two seniors that don't graduate from high school, it looks even worse, obviously, so those, those are, um. I think continued challenges for us, but obviously, you want all of your seniors to graduate from high school, and certainly, that's the goal. Um, we'll continue small group reading instruction, maintain tutoring for K three students, and continue targeted attendance interventions. Uh, whenever possible, monitoring ninth grade on track, uh, graduation and fifth grade completion. Fifth, fifth year completion rates will ensure students receive necessarily, guys, stand success, the academic path. But I think we do have more and more students that, um, it takes them five years to graduate from high school. Students are dealing with, you know, a lot of things in the states, and sometimes they get off track a little bit, but I think we're doing a pretty good job of maintaining the contact of. Students and ensuring that they graduate and benefit, that's take five years. Okay, intended outcomes, um, improve, improve third grade and reading efficiency, increasing ninth grade on track. Rates, reducing chronic absenteeism, and strengthening graduation outcomes, um, and then bystander C T E pathways. And provide personalized students support and their enhanced engagement and post-secondary readiness, whatever that is, and individual students, um. World, uh, through a, through a search-based curriculum and responsible, responsive interventions. Due for schools plan ensures that all students have resources and opportunities needed for academically and beyond. All right, key strategies, um. Built up them strategies and activities designed to close achievement gaps, increase access to C T E, the advanced coursework. And then have this one already, and reduce. We have to, we apparently have two slides of this.
Yeah, that's fine, you can go to the next.
We're gonna keep going.
Okay, um, the budget, which you might have to make bigger, and I'll talk you through. Um. Okay, budget-wise, as far as how we spend these funds, uh, we talked about how we use our early intervention funding, it's. You know, right at a thousand dollars, we help pay for the Oregon data suite for that. Our early literacy success money, we help. Uh, fund what we call, what is called, and part of the program, high dosage tutoring, so this is. Uh, educational assistance to help with small reading groups and small reading instruction, um, for that program. Uh, high school success, we use to fund C T E staffing. And associated costs, and then our student investment account, we use to fund our reduced class sizes in the elementary end. Um, particularly to F T E teachers and to F T E. Educational assistance, and then we, let me see. Um, also utilize some of those funds to pay for substitute teachers for our teams to meet. Um, mostly around reading interventions. So. The budget is utilized for the same things, hold this slide, this is twenty-five, twenty-six, the next slide is twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, it's the same things, it's just updated numbers on the current estimates we have, which are. Sorry, I need to close this preview so I can actually see the numbers. And you guys have the, this presentation as a PDF in your emails also, so you can, you'll get it in super in-depth if you want, like. Um, twenty-five, twenty-six, the current budget is five hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and some change. And twenty-six, twenty-seven, it's five hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. But for the same supports, both years.
Yeah, our tiered purse implements standardized progress monitoring tools incorporating more teacher and parent feedback opportunities, that's a big thing, just facilitate. As much communication between, uh, the school district and families as possible, then streamline data collection and analysis. It's, uh, that is challenging, um, and then it's, it gets convoluted sometimes, um, it's important to. Uh, keep that as streamlined as possible, we've been fully. All right, how the state understands success, and of course, this is always up for discussion, there's bills in the legislature now, a lot of them. Uh, centered around having, uh, more teeth to, um, to, more, yeah, more teeth and monitoring schools. And all the way to taking monitoring schools there, um. Um, the, in the high school success, elderly, the elderly require a state C E, Perkins Performance Targets. Federal school improvement, accountability data, who knows what's gonna happen with that, and things, federal is pretty much up on the air at this point in time. Uh, large to the performance growth targets, uh, local optional metrics and progress. A large two performance growth targets, local optional metrics and progress markers is at this point in time, how the state understands success. Longitudinal performing growth targets for us. Want to have data about the longitudinal analysis guidance. Established by the department overall and disaggregated grades for the following metrics, third grade reading proficiency rates measured by English language arts. Ninth grade on track rates, regular attendance rates, are we coming to school? Would be helpful if we are, four year on time graduation rates and the five year completion rates. Are the growth targets? Like how we understand success, just the impact of all the instruments that we're putting in place to help students move forward through the, for the, through the entire plan, through the entire educational process. And then the growth targets will be set up in four year cohort, graduation, five year cohort, completion, ninth grade on track, regular attendance, third grade E L A proficiency. And what happens next, we're just at the beginning, we can't really see this, but what happens when we present this this evening and then we submit to O D E. And then they work it through, that's just kind of continuation. And continue to work on this through the years to help to meet the mutual parts, you know, the need to be honest, but also to truly impact our programs in a positive way. That's one of the things that I would say in closing is that this has really been good for us in terms of it's moved us in a direction where we're in a ton better job now. Of communicating with families, asking families how it's going for them and things like that. And then those are just great things you can't do enough of that stuff. Teresa, what did we miss?
No, that was great. And then I would just say that the team worked so well together here at Duper and it's really fun to be able to sit down and hear the input and the feedback from community staff, students, and we in detail looked at those surveys. And and then also just digging into the data and things. Really the wonderful supports that are put in place at Duper School to support kids.
Thank you, Teresa. Questions and comments? More than.
We're awake again.
Okay, I have to say, I appreciate the presentation. They started in twenty twenty one. The integrated.
First, no, the first section was twenty three, twenty five. And so it's really like, it's a four year cycle that you renew every two years.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, so the two, before I was on the board, I read all the stuff about it. So it's nice to hear the, or see the numbers. I didn't. Thank you for.
And it's, yeah, and it's tough. And as I mentioned, it's anytime you look at data, you know, you have to look at it with a weary eye. And it's more challenging here. When you, if you have, if you have small classes and a couple of things change, kids move in, kids move out, it it changes a lot fast. But it is a good lens to look at to monitor your programs and and work for improvement all the time.
Appreciate the presentation, and I just want to remind everybody that this is in email. To get, if you really want to zero in, yeah, I'm there and stuff. And I guess the the couple of questions I had was the use of the funding. You, I mean, you've indicated that we're, we're seeing positive results and to get it, I mean, I just kind of question. Not to suggest change, but are we using the funding in the best way to get the most outcome? That it can. Yeah, or are there, are there some, maybe a couple of things you suggested we did a little bit different with the funding that would help us?
Yeah, I I don't know. Most of the funding is tied up in staffing. Okay, because what's, what percentage of our budget is staffing?
Eighty five. Eighty two point six percent this year.
Yeah, it is staffing. So that's really, that's really worrying about. You know, we, it's interesting with the early literacy, where we are going to buy a K two E L A curriculum this year, and there wasn't enough money there to do that. Luckily, we've got a grant here in the last couple of months that is allowing us to buy it this year before the year's over, so that it be in place for next year. Yes. Yeah. And actually, we got that out of the original SARS school money, right?
Yeah, yeah. S S A in a lot.
Yeah.
Just, you're gonna say something there. Like yours.
Oh, well, I was just kind of in on top of Jax, we would look at five, almost six F T E reduction without this funding.
But it's about what it brings.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then how much flexibility do you have? Like twenty six, twenty seven, if something changed or like, who would have just like, like, can you modify?
To my knowledge, quite a bit. Yeah, so we have, you have to submit like a change in plan, which we have done. Actually, we need to do for our early lit still this year, but like we did that last year in South Carolina.
Just so you can pivot if if something comes up that.
The news is it is O T E and they're fairly flexible, which sounds strange, but.
It's true.
It's true.
Is this state or federal funding?
State.
It's certain of those little bits that you talked about, right?
It, yeah. Is the early lit actually flow through federal funding?
Hmm, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know how much of it, if any, flows through the early lit. If Duper had a target, if like the title one was targeted insisted, a room improvement or the other, which is more intensive, anyway, then it would be that would be federal, but that's not the case up here.
Yeah, I just, the reason I ask that is the state of Oregon and the federal government are a little bit of a battle right now with education and some of the things. And I'm just wondering how solid is this funding?
Well, I'm already. Anything else? Well, move on.
Well, as I say, as far as programming and the effectiveness of use, you can look at, Sherman has their their presentation of this on their website, and then so does the DOWS. And just by memory, it looks pretty similar on funding for physicians, programs.
Yeah.
Which is a programs. I think, was this the one that Chris mentioned, shared, like, maybe Jefferson County School District in there?
No, no. That's all way on.
Well, Chris did a, Chris did a presentation on student success funds three months ago.
Yeah, in the classroom, that was impacted.
As I was, as I.
Okay, all right, Teresa. Yeah, thank you for coming out and spending this long evening with, talking through these exciting topics here. And so we appreciate seeing you and everything. And and thanks for the work of the E S T and partnership with Duper School to get us to this point.
Oh, yeah, this doesn't happen.
Yeah, so I just, we just appreciate, or appreciate your time tonight and the organization's commitment to working in our district. All right, the challenge of this board, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else staff wise you want to mention before we move on?
And now we just need a bunch of proof and all we need to mention.
Better, you know.
Yeah, I make motion when you approve the integrated guidance.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And it's gonna second. We're missing.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, so we got a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion on this? I'm hearing none. All those in favor of approving the integrated guidance document as, as attached and as presented signify by saying I, I know, I, yeah, opposing. Okay, motion passes. Yeah. Yeah. Well, yeah, thanks, and thanks for your time. And again, I think, you know, Kristen would have had some additional comments and thoughts in there. Yes, but maybe if she has some things, we can bring this to the next meeting and stuff.
The next item on the list is this policy, J H H, and this is a first reading. Yeah, it's a pretty, pretty important topic. Here. And actually, that's why Tiffany said, thank you, or kind of, I was gonna call her. Bye, yeah. And obviously Tiffany's instrumental, leaves, leaves all of this work for us. This is a first reading, and this is pretty much what everybody around the state adopts. Is that correct?
Tiffany, can I stick on you for just a little bit here? Cause I mean, I, in my mind, you're kind of the subject matter expert on this, on this suicide topic and stuff. And so I guess the few questions I have is, you know, is there anything that you want to point out in here that these are key things we need to make sure we're doing?
I think so. It's, it's mandated across the state that we'll just adopt a policy like this is taken straight from actual organs to orders of aviation. I think the work that we did around our prevention, enhancement, and post prevention plan, I think, like you wanted to look at last year. I mean, that's a pretty lengthy document and really outlines the work that we're doing as a school district around prevention and extension and lays out plans, pretty specific plans if if we are dealing with that type of situation here at Duper, they're included. So I think a lot of the bulk of the work is done and include that document. It's a living document, but it's really a guide. Whether I'm here or there's someone else in my position, regardless of, you know, staffing, that's a guide that is really clear around what we do for our kids around training personnel. We do a Q P R training every year for our entire staff, and that, I think, has happened in the years that I've been here. And I don't know that we used to do that. It's, it's almost like a C P R class, but it's around mental health. And so we do that yearly and we're getting a few other staff members to kind of train in some more intensive trainings around suicide prevention. So it is a really important topic. We're not immune to this unfortunate that our kids are facing in particular. And so it's just an important topic for us to be talking about with kids, and it's important for our parents to be talking about with their kids and then partnering with parents. So in that protocol, there's also like a suicide prevention or suicide risk assessment screening tool that I utilize with kids that had expressed some suicide violation. And so Chris, there is, there are options that they go to their parents and reporting that and such, we take the local.
So you think, you think we have what we need in this?
I do. I think it covers us policy wise and then that other documentary helps guide the staff.
Yeah, thank you. And I really do look at you. It's our, our expert in this, in this matter. And, you know, you just with your background and, yeah, experience with this stuff, so. Yeah, so thanks for hanging out tonight. I appreciate the input there. For the rest of the board, is there anything in particular, this is a first reading of this policy, is there anything in particular that stands out or you want to highlight or? So we'll bring it back next meeting. May for second reading and then in June for third meeting and stuff. And so Mr. Henderson, is there anything you want to put in here? No. So no actions to be had there. The next item on the list, I'd actually like to table this. This is something that Mrs. Whitley was gonna cover. It should be number five of the new business, this points K E C B and K E C A R. And I think it'd be best just to let Mrs. Whitley come back in May and present this information to us. Let's basically talking about non-resident student admissions, which some of this will get into the workshop and then I just, any objections to that, just tabling this particular item and letting Mrs. Whitley come back in next month and go through that. Yeah, and that's, that, if I didn't miss anything, that includes everything on the agenda. Anything else in final words or?
It feels like it's been a long night.
I have some with, so we're in the workshop, which we don't make motions and decisions in workshops. So in anticipation. Retreat, that's what I, we're here. So in anticipation for that to set up something like a committee for the four day week. I would venture to say that it'd be nice to put a motion in tonight to create that committee to meet after our retreat, so they can hit it right after a retreat with our directives and be ready, possibly ready, or at least getting that together. But we put a timeline where they don't meet together until after.
So we're using, make a motion to create the committee, but not actually.
Yeah, create a special committee to investigate a four day school week. Starting after our retreat, so they can put the ground running, so we don't have to make that motion in May. So we don't lose two weeks, so you can sense we have weeks.
Yes. Yeah, I think a couple of thoughts. I guess what I was thinking about was one timeline of what's real of getting done and what else is on the plate right now for staff and administration. So just kind of considering that. And then I think would we want the, would we basically ask the administration to create that committee? Or does the school board create that committee, I guess? Well, I think school board members have to participate in many of that, but.
Well, we can make a special committee or we can do another workshop. There's just different procedures to make that happen. And so
I think when we, like the fifteen or twenty minutes for a talk, right, it's been very high level topics of what it is that or may want to see, but then the committee's gonna need that, you know, who's gonna be on the committee and.
Yeah, special committees, the chair can appoint them to take up running. I understand we can't make a committee at the workshop, like we're going to, we're gonna meet in three weeks, I guess, is kind of what I, I just, without having that conversation, I mean, what we want to see.
I think, I think that this, if I'm hearing you, and I think there's more to, definitely want to hear from staff, I mean, administration and, and teachers and other staff or their thoughts on this. We, we want to make that known, that we want to hear this information. But just kind of looking at the timing now that it's gonna take some time to pieces, some, piece some of that together, but I think the board's gonna have to multiple soon. Highlights or priorities, this is things we'd want to see now, so.
Plus, I mean, you already have the committee, committee ready to go out of the word.
Not necessarily appointing the committee, but just saying that we want to create a committee.
Yeah, so we do it this month, so that way we don't have to wait till next month to create a special committee or another workshop. So anyway, just think, we don't have to do it.
I mean, we could make a motion to create, to like, allow the committee to be created, I guess, is that, is that what kind of like?
Well, you can, we can make, as long as you announce that we will make a motion on the agenda at the workshops. We can make it, we can also do it at the workshop. But traditionally, you don't make any deliberation decisions at a workshop. It's not, yeah.
I think the, the retreat's open to the public, but it's not certainly formatted in a way, yeah, with tradition and stuff. So I guess it's part of part of like how big of a hurry are we do this? Is there anything that we have to get on track? I just.
No, I'm just thinking about the messaging to the teachers where they've sent us an email a week and a half ago with a bunch of data. We got it again tonight. And so they're chomping at the bit. And our top priority would, should be teacher appreciation, like, hey, we want, we do want to get this on track. So and I'm just spitballing out of my head. There's a, there's a way to make it feel like it's moving without having to say, well, we're gonna have to wait another two weeks. We'll wait another week. When can we get together? Just to have something in place. It's like, oh, they did, they did consider this as a something we want to do quick, not quickly, but.
So, yeah, I just, again, I'm just like thinking about the various meetings coming up, staff's gonna be working on budget meeting. We got the retreat coming up. Those types of things of when, when's the right time to start having that conversation? Is it, is there any urgency that we have to do something this week with this, even, even though from what I'm hearing from the board is we want to at least hear and and gain information of saying we're for or against anything like that, so. Yeah, I mean. What do you think, Stan?
I don't know, but I think there's a tremendous amount of information from so many angles. I think on the twenty second, we will create division. You know, what we should be focusing on for sure. But that's a, that's a big deal, right? And I just don't think we should get in that big of a hurry. Let's get division next week. And we have a lot of people here to, to. Uh, we have a lot of people here to, to talk about what should be a part of that. And, and that's a start. I've always saying that, I, I just think it's too early. I, I just think there's so much. Stuff we gotta get before we can group and even make decisions about anything.
I think, I think all of it from here and from me, Tim, is to try to get some initial work done before the end of the school year escapes. Is, yeah, you're seeing this.
You know, to take that initiative to create.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it hurts to basically say that. We can read the committee. I mean, the committee's probably not gonna start doing anything until after we make that list, but I think all Tim's asking is that we. Give permission, give, make the motion to create a committee, and that's not like the committee actually gets created this week.
Yeah.
It just delays it so that, like, even maybe that, uh, if there is gonna be a committee. This allows that to happen if it's gonna happen. And then at the May meeting, we could actually approve. Approve an actual committee so that they can start their deliberation. So, cause nothing's gonna happen until after that, maybe even. Even if we start something tonight, like in terms of putting, putting the committee in. Creating the opportunity for a committee.
That's what I'm, yeah.
Not like appointing a committee, making the list, and I can't do that without ready to do that. Yeah, I mean, I agree with Sam, like, this is not something we need to rush in terms of, like, we need to be careful and thoughtful about the process, but. We do need to be mindful of the fact that, like, if it goes past June, it's sort of a good point to. You know, you get, you get to the point where it is too late.
Right.
If you're really gonna seriously consider it. And we're not even sure how far we are yet. But like, if we open up the opportunity to. Allow a committee to be created. Then people can have deliberations starting in May. Where's, I mean, because realistically, even once the committee list is made, it takes them a while to. Find time to meet, because like you said, it's getting to the end of the year and there's prom and there's meetings and it's full, so. It doesn't hurt. To allow that to happen, that this kind of.
Tim, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that we. Create a committee to explore the four day school week, starting after the retreat. The board retreat.
Well.
And a special committee falls underneath the board chair appointment process.
What is it? I mean, the. The staff should be. So you're, I mean, I guess, yeah, I guess it's up to maybe, maybe part of that deliberation is, is, is. But that is, is who's this, who's, who's in charge of this committee?
Yeah, you can make that decision later.
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to put wording in there that decides that it's a board thing or it's a staff thing. It's probably a combination. I mean, but just right now, it's just like, we agree that a committee can be created.
Yeah. I make a motion that we, I'll, I'll re, re, make a motion that we allow a committee to be formed after the retreat. For the exploration of a four day school week.
But it can't be approved till the next meeting anyways, right?
Right. Like, we can't appoint an official committee with people's.
My meeting anyway.
No, I'm saying you can establish it because the special committees fall underneath the board chair. The chair can. Appoint members to that committee. So that's me, it's just.
Committee itself is not gonna get set till the May. This is basically allowing us to proceed. It's not, we're not really, we're just, we're just saying it's okay. And risk and, and create the environment where we have a way to look at that information that we're asked.
Yeah, so it's after that, after the retreat of, yeah.
In the same hour or?
Anytime after. It's just, it can be established a week before, two weeks before our next meeting. So we're not going, well, who do we want to have on this committee? Let's establish a committee, committee. It can. The board chair has the authority to start thinking about that right after our retreat. And so it, it essentially puts it in Roberts Court to. Establish the people or make a recommendation, or these are the people who need to send us an email.
Or ask the staff to turn the list.
Or the staff can come to him and he can just go, boom, there it is. And we don't have to deliberate.
A lot about it. I think, uh, the point I want to make is my time is extremely limited. And so I just want to be a hundred percent upfront, um. I, I'm gonna, I need to get someone to take that lead, if that's what you're expecting, because uh, otherwise you're gonna be highly disappointed in what you receive.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
So, I think, Mr. Henderson.
Who's putting this committee together? I mean, should we staff that? Definitely the information I need to collect.
Yeah, and the staff members, we're talking about it a little bit, like, we have a, a staff that's unanimous about this. We don't. Well, we have staff members that are discussion. Are going to get a cut in pay if this happens. Um, and they need to be involved as well. So it, it's not like there's this tidal wave, you know, something. So I think we need to be careful of that as well, because there, there's other perspectives here as well.
Well, I, I think that.
And, yeah, and, you know, and I'll just say, I mean, I'll stay out of it, cause I'm been identified as an infidel who's against this. I don't, you know, that's not my deal. It's, it's not. Um, it's, it may be in four days' court, it could be a great thing for the Duper School District. But the reality is, is that the information was received a month ago, um, and the, 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 um, the, uh. Um, in the meeting that counted a week and things like that. We're not in a crisis mode here. We're not.
Yeah, well, I mean, maybe that's, I guess, they're still in the process to deliberate any of this information. People have enough information. That is going to ask you, like, what happens? There's a lot, and that's kind of what, um. I think, you know, I think that. It is something that can be looked at, like, I know saying that it's gonna be the thing you decide to do. But it's. I mean, it, it may not be something that's even practical to do, certainly by next school year, because it isn't a lot of time, but it was signed. For to sort of, uh, what it was holding in the, in the planning process. But it doesn't mean that if there could be, maybe the fix out of long term and, and. And maybe that you start pulling in more different games and then that changes the mind of some of the folks who.
Yeah, you know, and maybe, and maybe it can be a great thing for the school district, but there's a lot of work to be done.
Right, it's totally, which is. I think, like I said, I think that's why there needs to be a separate committee and it's not something the board decides indefinitely and about more, a lot, but.
Well, and, and just like, you know, I'm okay with this motion dying. And it doesn't hurt my, no, no one else wants it. That's your way of doing yourself.
I, I don't see this as like, oh, we're creating a committee tomorrow. I see this as like, eh, we're opening the door to the potential, maybe creating a committee by May, maybe not.
And most people want to wait till maybe, I'm perfectly fine with that too. I'm just throwing it out there, cause I know that, I want the teachers to know that we're working on hearing that.
That's probably, I guess, um. My. Thought would be is the, I wanna call it due diligence is gonna be several months.
Yeah.
To try to get information.
For sure.
To decide what the best for the district is. So, I mean, if you wanna, you know, make a motion and get a second, we can vote on that tonight, the committee piece, but I just. Think from what I'm hearing from you, that you want to make sure that. The teachers are heard.
Yeah.
Um, and open that door, and still know acknowledging that it's gonna take several months. So, yeah, probably get the information to. At some point. Either decide to move forward with that. You know, with that thought.
Let me see what the. So again, so our next meeting is the fifth? Yes. It's only a meeting today, so. Um, yeah, there's, it sounds like to me that, I mean, just wait till then too. I mean, I don't. It, it's always awkward. You're like, oh, a motion and people, and the implications of either second or not second. And so. I'm cool with waiting on it and just seeing what the teachers are saying, just in conversation.
Yeah, it's, it's whatever you guys want for tonight. I think, I think at the end of the day, you know, you've made your, made your point. Want, yeah, your feedback. Stating such, yes, sir.
Okay. No, I'm good.
Are you okay?
There's a lot of information that we don't have yet. Somebody's gonna have to find that information.
So I guess with that, instead of you guys, I'll give during the meeting then.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna officially adjourn the meeting and, and uh, for all, all those, as of January sixth. Uh, the meeting has been, will be recorded based on the district website. So thank you again for the recording of this. Helped us sell this completely.